And I'm going to ask a volunteer to lead us into the pledge tonight. Do we have a volunteer? Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, volunteers. At this time, we would like to say welcome to any special guest. Do we have any public officials in the audience? That being said, none? Did we hear a volunteer? Did we hear an official back there? A potential one? Possibly. Thank you so very much. Well, welcome to all of you. And Ms. Poole, we welcome you. We missed you last time. Glad to have you back.
Thank you. I feel like I haven't seen y'all in forever, so it's good to be back. Since last year, actually.
Since last year.
Happy New Year to you all. Good evening, Chairman Porter, Vice Chairman North, Dr. Register and Board members. Our December T-Mac meeting was hosted by Maplewood High School. One of our own members, Jamal Demosa, told his story how he became determined to become a successful student and person in spite of the challenges and barriers he faced as an adolescent and teen. Some of the T-Mac student feedback was received, and I have some information here. Some of the questions that we asked them after the meeting was how valuable was the material presented, and 23 out of the 24 said it was excellent. And did you feel free to ask questions, disagree, express ideas? 20 out of the 24 said it was excellent. And they learned that they were not the only one who experienced child abuse. So Jamal had experienced some child abuse when he was younger, and he told about that. And they also learned that no matter what you have trouble with, you can still succeed. And it doesn't matter where you come from, you can still be successful. And they think they will be successful no matter what and come to the next meeting in this January. And they will strive to be a better student. And they felt empowered by his story and inspired. And that's pretty much it for that. And on January, we will have, well, this January, on the 24th, I believe, we'll have a meeting here at the Board of Education. We will be presented with a drug education session from Bradford Health Services and a personal testimony from a resident with the Davison County Drug Court. We now have 94 students enrolled in T-Mac representing 18 schools, which is very good because we wanted the group to be as representative as the schools as possible. So we wanted as many students from as many schools as we could get. And that was it. That concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you so very much. And if I might ask if we could get a copy of your report?
Yes, ma'am.
And from now on, so that we can file it with our board minutes as well. Thank you so very much. And we really appreciate your service.
Thank you.
Very much. At this time, Dr. Keel.
Tonight, I would like for us to remember two of our employees who have passed away. First, Ms. Judy Ford Doughty. Judy Ford Doughty served MNPS for 42 years. She began her career working in the Human Relations Office in September of 1971. She later transferred to Human Resources, where she worked until August of 1989, when she transferred to Antioch High School. Ms. Doughty worked at Antioch High School for 23 years, first as a school secretary and then as executive secretary, bookkeeper. She was an Antioch High School graduate and a vital part of the school and community throughout her career. She is survived by her husband, Kerry Doughty, her son, Ed Hoover, her daughter, Christina Vidito, and her five grandchildren. Ms. Doughty will be deeply missed by the faculty, staff, and community of Antioch High School. Also, Mr. Robert Roberson. Mr. Roberson was one of our dedicated school bus monitors for exceptional education students. Although his employment with MNPS was limited, he became very attached and compassionate to all the students he served. Mr. Roberson was soft-spoken, kind, and caring, and he was an asset to the department. We will miss his kind, smiling face, as well as the students he came in contact with daily. If we could have a moment of silence to remember these two employees? Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Keel. At this time and on our agenda, we have public participation. The Board will hear from those persons who have requested to appear at the Board meeting. In the interest of time, speakers are requested to limit remarks to three minutes or less, and your comments will be timed. So at this time, Ms. Andrea Hicks.
Thank you for allowing me to speak to you today. The reason why I came here was for a question on policy that I was informed about by a Metro employee. There was an incident that occurred at a school, and I was told by a teacher that only parents that were directly involved with the incident could be notified by the school that something happened. However, I was curious to know if there was an incident that presented danger to other students, how would the other parents be able to know that they need to talk to their children to find out if they too were involved in the incident if they were never notified
No, we're not allowed to ask you any questions or respond. We can only listen.
Okay. As far as I know, no formal charges have been made at this time. There is an ongoing investigation. However, I guess as a concerned parent, if my child is supposed to feel safe at the school, but there is an unsafe incident that occurs, I don't know how other parents would be notified to let them know, hey, you need to have a conversation with your child. There are things that are taking place at the school that you may not be made aware of unless a notice of some kind is sent. It doesn't have to reveal specific information. I realize that, you know, due to privacy, you can't reveal that kind of information. And also because it is an ongoing investigation and the police are involved, that there are steps to protect everybody that needs to take place. But I feel like if they can send out a notice saying, hey, we're having a bake sale, we're having a fundraiser, you're not traveling the proper way to drop your kids off, I feel like the parents also should be notified that, hey, a situation occurred at the school, and we need you to talk to your children just to ensure that they know that, yes, the school is still safe, and to make sure that their children are also not victims of whatever the situation that happened. That's all I have.
Thank you so very much.
Thank you.
Governance issues?
Before you present the governance issues, I would like to request that Item 1-G be pulled and later discussed.
Madam Chairwoman, I'd like to make a similar request to Item 7.
Item 7?
Item 7.
Is that under the?
It's for discussion.
That's for discussion.
That is for discussion.
Yeah, we do have that. If you look on down.
Yep, you're right.
Under 2? I mean, under, yeah, number 7.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Ms... Mr. North?
The consent agenda. A, approval of minutes, December 13, 2011, regular meeting, and December 19, 2011, special meeting. B, change order number 2 for Glengarry Elementary School additions and renovations, RG Anderson Company Incorporated, M-430. C, awarding of bids and contracts. 1, new teacher center. 2, Vanderbilt University. 3, Vanderbilt University Center for Science Outreach. 4, ASCD. 5, PABS, Doing Business as Creating Diamonds. 6, Sylvan Learning. 7, Gaylord Entertainment Company. D, recommendation to surplus property, a portion of the Bellevue Middle School site, Capital Needs Committee. E, recommendation to surplus property, a portion of the Mural School site, Capital Needs Committee. F, recommended approval of the 2012 through 2018 capital budget from the Capital Needs Committee. And H, recommended approval of legal settlement in the case of Doe versus Metropolitan Government of Nashville and Davidson County, File Number L-15191, Docket Number 10C1256, and the amount of $300,000. Madam Chair, that completes the consent agenda.
I move that we accept the consent agenda as read.
We have a motion?
Second.
And a second? All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
And a no? Motion carries. Ms. Simmons? Will entertain your?
Yes, Madam Chair. The Director's Evaluation Committee met last week to conduct a formal evaluation of the Director of Schools, and the results of the evaluation were uniformly positive. The evaluations all averaged in the performance level and behavioral competency being very competent. The total average of the evaluation for everyone's edification was 4.36, with 4 being exceeded expectations. So we feel very good and ask that the full Board accept the recommendation of the Evaluation Committee and as presented.
I move that we accept the recommendation of the Evaluation Committee. A second?
We have a motion and second? Any discussion? No discussion? All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Congratulations, Dr. Register, on another productive year.
Thank you very much.
Okay, and now, Ms... We move on into our next item, and that is Ms. Shepherd.
Student.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I'm getting ahead of myself. Student disciplinary here. Mr. North? Would you please come forth? We're going to ask our alternative. If you would, please come forth. I'm anxious to get finished. We have our student disciplinary appeal, and if you would, give us an overview, and then we'll go from there.
We have, we... May I?
Yes, please.
We have, we've reviewed the record, and we want to be sure that our alternative actions this evening are to either grant a hearing or deny a hearing and decide based on the record whether to uphold the Director's findings, reverse the Director's findings, or amend the punishment, I guess. But we can't, but we're not allowed to increase the punishment. Is that correct?
Yeah. Your first duty is to grant or deny the request for a hearing. Second to that, you can adopt the findings below and the decision below, affirm it, overturn it, and all of that can happen with or without a hearing. You cannot extend the penalty. So the penalty now is that the student is expelled until May 24, 2012.
Madam Chair, based on the record, I move to uphold and affirm the decision of the Director of Schools without a hearing.
A second.
We have a motion and a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Those opposed, motion carries. Thank you, Mr. North. And now, Ms. Shepherd.
All right. The advocacy committee met recently, and we were very busy. We came up with several resolutions. The first one being a recommended approval to support the Dream Act, which basically we support the passage of the Dream Act, and we call on the Tennessee Congressional delegation to support all the students who struggle to achieve the dream of higher education. We recognize the significance of increasing the accessibility of education and support the Dream Act for its mission to make a dream of a college of education a reality. And we want to be that voice that supports the Dream Act. I recommend approval.
We have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
Second.
Any discussion? Any further discussion on this? Seeing none? All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries.
The second resolution that we have before us tonight is to lower the ratio for English learner population from 30 students to 20 students. We support this resolution because of the difficulty in that particular area and that instruction. And I recommend approval.
Do we hear a second?
Second.
Discussion? No discussion? All in favor? Let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Ayes carry. Motion. Motion is carried. Go on, Ms. Shepherd.
All right. The next one that we have is the resolution to revise Tennessee's BEP formula for funding education. This is never, our BEP funding is never what we want it to be, but it is in desperate need of an overhaul. And so for that reason, the advocacy committee voted unanimously to support this resolution. And I support, and I recommend approval.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Discussion?
Can you tell us, what are the initiatives?
I'm sorry. I skipped. I went on to number 6 instead of...
That's all right. We'll go ahead and entertain that one.
Okay.
I'm sorry.
Maybe we can ask Mr. Henson if he would come and support us in that since he's our guru for the BEP. If you could share some of that information about what the BEP is and where we are at this point. Of course, we're always asking for more money.
Well, back in 2007, Governor Bretton proposed what was called BEP 2.0, which required a significant additional funding for public school districts across the state. It was partially implemented in 2007 and has yet to be fully implemented or fully funded. Since that time, we all know what's happened with the economy and with state revenues, and this is all related to the state having additional funds to provide two public school districts. And so there are a number of things within that BEP 2.0 proposal which would generate more funding for all 136 public school districts across the state. There are a couple of those that would particularly benefit Metro Nashville. The first that you've already discussed is the reduction of the pupil teacher ratio through the formula for our English learner students. Currently, in the formula, it's one teacher per 30 EL students. The recommendation has been 1 to 20, which would generate more dollars. And since we have the most EL students in the state of Tennessee, we would benefit more than any other district in the state of Tennessee if that component were changed. The other is the concern about eliminating the cost differential factor in the formula, which the acronym is the CDF. That is intended to recognize differences in cost of living or differences in the costs of doing business across the state. If it were taken away completely, then the assumption is made that it costs the same to do business regardless of where you are in Tennessee, and we all know that that's not accurate. And so your resolution is asking for a replacement for the CDF to measure accurately, more accurately measure and take into consideration differences in cost of living and differences in cost of doing business.
Any other questions? Good, thank you, Mr. Henson. Okay, and are we ready for the vote? All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries.
And the last one that we are discussing is the resolution to implement the education reforms initiatives by the Tennessee General Assembly. It was another unanimous vote, and we have many initiatives on several different levels making changes in MNPS, and I think we have done an excellent job doing that. And this basically is saying we would like to give them a chance to work. So I recommend approval.
Stay there. Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. And number 7? I think we had some discussion. But you need to carry the motion first.
And the number 7 was a recommended approval. It was a unanimous vote to oppose legislation to add multiple charter school authorizations, authorizers, excuse me. Michael, is this one you wanted to talk about?
Do we have a second for that?
I didn't recommend approval yet because I thought we were discussing.
You need to go ahead and recommend.
I recommend approval.
Second. We have a motion and a second, and now discussion.
I'm sorry I was unable to join you in the committee meeting. I received this resolution today and have not had a tremendous amount of time to speak, certainly with my fellow Board members, about the resolution. I haven't had the opportunity to speak to anybody or folks within the state. I think many, many people in the charter school world favor multiple charter authorizers statewide, primarily because across the country, the management of public education resides solely with each local school board. I think if all school boards were as enlightened and perhaps as forward-thinking as this board, there probably would be no need for this resolution. But most school boards across the state are fighting charters because they fail to fully understand the role effective charters can play in moving a district forward. To move the state forward, entrepreneurial educators in those districts facing challenges need to be able to go directly to a state authorizer. When that exists, reluctant school boards begin to realize that they had better get involved in a constructive way, or they'll be left behind. Some states have too many authorizers, and some authorizers, including some school boards, are not equipped to properly administer the duties. I favor allowing authorizers a limited number of charters. If their previously approved schools perform well, then the authorizers could be allowed more leeway. If not, they could lose their authorizing powers. Within the state and across the nation, much discussion has taken place about the best way to set up multiple authorizers. It could be that the ASD has granted that role, the state board, or an appointed state charter board that exists solely for this purpose. I believe, though, that as a board, to unilaterally oppose a second authorizer could place children in other counties at risk, which could in turn place their districts at risk and the state at risk, which directly would have an impact on us. I would vote in favor of abandoning this resolution because I am in favor of multiple authorizers in the state so that other districts can have the opportunity to have charter schools.
So are you amending Ms. Shepherd's motion?
I'm stating my position.
Okay.
And I wanted to throw out for discussion. I didn't attend the advocacy committee meeting. I don't know the reason, other than perhaps that we may not want the state acting as an authorizer in our county. I think that we're doing a great job with charters. I'm incredibly impressed with the Director and Mr. Coverstone's efforts behind charters and the actions this board has taken the last four or five years to enable charters within the state. But my opinion and what I'm trying to impress upon my fellow Board members as they think about a vote is that if we vote for this resolution and vote to limit the number of authorizers in the state, I think if we look at the other 130-plus counties statewide, that we are doing a disservice to children in those counties. I believe it's of critical importance that if a board does not authorize a charter, that there be a second authorizing entity that has the capacity to do so. I'm stating my opinion and hope you'll take that into consideration as you cast your vote tonight. There may be others that would have differing opinions, and I would certainly welcome to hear those.
Any other discussion? Mr. North?
I think that underestimates other school boards across the state. And as a member of a school board that's been underestimated across the state before, I sort of recognize that. I think school boards are in the best position to decide what schools are best for their district. And the buy-in that the process, the resulting mutual respect of a tough charter process where the charter schools are invested in the application process, the board is invested in it and takes it seriously, and we have to work together, and it's, they become a part of the district. And so it's important that it works together. An example of where a school board, I'm sure there's examples where it turned out fine, but there are examples where school board have denied an application, an outside entity reversed and sort of forced the school board to approve this charter school. And the result was a breakdown of the relationship between the school system and that charter school in a way where it has taken nearly closing the school in order to hopefully get on the same page now. And I think that is the kind of thing that, I think it's better for, I think charter schools are more effective when there is that collaborative relationship and there is that mutual respect. And I think that comes from a board that is involved in the application, the authorizing process. And I think outside, that's my opinion, outside authorizers put that in jeopardy and cause real, and could, in some instances, cause real harm to the charter schools as well as the school district.
Yes, Ms. Shepherd?
And I do agree with everything that Mark just said. We had this discussion at the committee meeting. And then another point, too, I think that was made, was the fact that we ultimately have responsibility for these schools. And if we have no say in their recommendation, then that just has usurped, you know, anything that we might, you know, any authority that we might have. So if you're going to have responsibility for it, then you need to have a say in it.
Do you know if, and I don't, maybe this should be directed towards Dr. Register, but under the ASD with the charter schools that the state is creating, who has responsibility? If the state's creating the school, do they ultimately have that responsibility?
Yes, the Achievement School District does. That's correct.
And that act, is the Achievement School District like a charter? Those schools?
It is a chartering, it has authority by state law to charter.
To charter. So they, and how, and I don't know if you know this, Ms. Shepherd, but in that scenario where the ASD is authorizing a charter school in our district, and they have responsibility, how does the... how does the, how does this resolution, and what, I guess you drafted it, Mr. North, how does this resolution contemplate the law? Because I believe that we're talking about this in relation to a law that's pending at the state level. Does that law say that an authorizing, an authorizer would authorize a school and operate the school and then make it our school, as I believe you just said, Ms. Shepherd? Or if they authorize it, are the kids their responsibility? Or do we know?
This is, right, this is, I mean, I guess they could pass a law where they set up an entire different school district. I don't think that's...
If it's under the ASD, if they have responsibility and they're...
If they create, if a whole new board is created, a whole new entity that is now charter school authorizers, I think that is a terrible idea. And I mean, and maybe that's, you know, I mean, maybe that is what some in the legislature are moving toward.
Could you expand on the why it's a terrible idea?
You mean the idea to basically, to attack school districts and set up sort of seceding school districts across the state? I think the damage to the public schools is enormous and is eventually certain if that is, if that's the process that the state is going to head to.
But do you interpret, with the drafting of this document, is that what you're trying to prevent? Or are you trying to prevent an authorizer who would authorize one school in Murray County? Or in...
I'm trying to say that Murray County School Board ought to be the one who authorizes charter schools in Murray County. I think they're in the best position to do it. I don't think anybody on Capitol Hill in Nashville or in the state offices in Nashville are in nearly as good a position to decide what charter school is appropriate for Murray County, other than, not nearly as, in as good a position as the Murray County School That's what I'm saying with this resolution.
Dr. Register?
I'd be glad to clarify, to talk a little bit more about the Achievement School District, about what its provisions are, if you'd like. I can do it succinctly.
Would you please?
Very helpful.
Okay, all right. The Achievement School District is, according to the waiver that's been proposed, has authority over the bottom 5% of the schools in the state. That's 85 schools across the state of Tennessee. And they actually have the authority to take by proposal, the authority to take, to run those schools in several different ways. They can actually take over a school and it can become a state-run school. They can, and it's not the waiver, I made a misstatement there, it's a part of the law that's already been passed. They can take over a school and make it a state-run school. They can close a school. They can convert to charters. Or the last provision is that they can create an innovation zone patterned after the one that we've created in Davidson County. So I think those are the provisions that, the options that the Achievement School District and Superintendent Chris Barbic has.
Any more?
Mr. North, while I, I agree that typically, I am a tremendous supporter of local control. I believe in it firmly. I also, though, have at TSBA meetings in other facets of my professional life seen instances where folks in the community want to do something and their elected representatives don't want to go along with it. I continue to believe that having a second authorizing entity would influence boards who may have a reservation for a personal reason. For example, you'll see many boards, many districts that are smaller than my cluster. And you'll have a board that would have members whose brothers and sisters and cousins and friends and family worked for the school who could lose a job if a charter's created. May or may not be in the best interest of the kids there. I continue to fully believe that having a second authorizer, although local control was good, and I believe in it, I think a second authorizer can hold a board that's reluctant to approve a charter for any reason accountable and may help us in taking that process.
I not only believe in, I not only believe in the local control, I trust the local office holders and trust the voters, the wisdom of the voters in those school districts. Call the question.
Please, can I call for the question? By show of hands, please, all in favor of the recommendation made by Ms. Shepherd, the approval of the resolution and oppose legislation to add multiple charter schools, authorizers, let it be known by raising hand, please, as we count.
What now? I've said it again. I was trying to see if we had a second, you know, initially, so.
I thought we did. I thought we did. What we're doing now, we're voting on the recommendation that came to us by Ms. Shepherd through the advocacy committee on number seven. So all in favor of this resolution or recommendation for approval of this resolution, please raise your hands. My yes votes, so that's unanimous.
Not unanimous. Keep that a close enough.
I didn't raise my hand.
Madam Chairman.
I was getting ready to. Let me carry the motion through, please. With my vote, it's eight votes for the recommendation and one against.
Madam Chairman.
Yes.
Just as a point of information, under Robert's Rules of Order, any recommendation coming from a committee is in fact a motion and does not require a second. I just want for future reference, I mean, you can, we've been doing it, but when she asks a question whether it's a second, it doesn't have to be a second.
I just want to make sure it's ironclad. Thank you. Okay. Thank you so much, and thank you, board members, for the discussion. Okay. Let's go on to the reports. Dr. Register?
Madam Chairman, members of the board, we have two reports to present tonight. The first one is, I'll ask Lisa Wilkshire to come up to the podium to help me with a presentation, the PowerPoint. This will be a brief, brief presentation. It's not a full-blown TLG presentation at all, but it is a part of the monitoring process for MNPS achieves. And I'd refer you back to over two years ago now, almost three years ago, when the MNPS achieves structure was created, that we have nine transformational leadership groups, and there is an oversight committee that was formed to coordinate the work of MNPS achieves. And that oversight team has a practice of giving an update to the board periodically, and we want to do that tonight. I will introduce Lisa Wilkshire. I think all of you know Lisa. Lisa's Assistant for Strategic Planning and Management and does a great job in managing the Race to the Top program in addition to, in addition to other work, which is a big job. Oversight committee is composed of these members presently, Fred Carr, David Fox, Linda De Priest, Gloria Frazier, Gracie Porter, Chris Henson, Meredith Libby, Tony Majors, John Norris, Jesse Register, and Lisa Wilkshire. So let me flip into the presentation here and say that I want to speak just a little bit about how the focus has shifted over time. And I'll start with looking at where we are presently and how the approach to MNPS achieves and the work of the oversight team specifically has been restructured some this year. We've redesigned the quarterly sessions to better, to better interact with the TLGs, to look, to review, and to oversee the work of the TLGs. The fact that the membership's changed has been a positive one, we think. We've brought new people onto the committee as people have aged off and feel like the oversight team is becoming very effective as we move forward. This year, there's been a real change in emphasis to one of looking at cross-cutting issues, and by that we mean how do the different TLGs interact with each other and communicate with each other. That's been very important to us this year. And then finally, to recognize the fact that we're really being, we're really looking, taking a hard look at effectiveness of strategies that have been developed, fewer initiatives, but hopefully more strategic. The evolving role of the TLG, the oversight team over the three years has been this, as evidenced in this slide. In the first year, I was new, and we were establishing working, and the MNPS achieves initiative was new. So we were really establishing working relationships between committees and among people. In year two, there was a real focus on tightening priorities, and the oversight team focused on monitoring the work of the TLGs. We spent a lot of time talking about whether the TLGs and the work that was going on was effective, whether we had good traction in all of those committees. And we, and the oversight committee took very seriously giving advice or providing input for various strategies that were being used in the TLGs. In the third year, we've been able to change our focus again, and I think I'll restate what I stated earlier. This year, it's really focusing on cross-cutting issues and the concept of coherence. Is everything coming together? Do we have a common focus in what we're doing? And monitoring implementation this year. Our goal this year is implementation and sustainability. And looking forward, are we able to sustain the work that's being done by the TLGs? I'll ask Lisa to talk to the next two slides because she's been very involved in this process.
Well, good evening. In addition to the shifts mentioned by Dr. Register, we have some work in progress right now where the actual structures of the TLGs are changing and reforming so that they can best meet the goals of the TLG. An example of this is the performance of disadvantaged youth, which from the very beginning of the formation of this TLG, the work has been complex and challenging because this group is really advocating for 60,000-plus students in the district, the majority of the students in the district. And so the challenge all along has been really trying to look for high-impact strategies that are scalable and effective and can really improve the academic achievement of economically disadvantaged youth. And with the leadership of Brenda Steele and her community co-chair, Robin Biester-Vanderweel, the work has become very tight with much more prioritized because the work started out this big and has kind of moved in, but nonetheless still faces the challenge just by the sheer numbers of students that they're advocating for. So there's some transition work that's in process right now, brand new, it's just happened over the last few weeks, where we're looking at restructuring the disadvantaged TLG so that the advocating for economically disadvantaged youth really becomes a priority of all TLGs, and it already is in large measure. But this would kind of push the work out so that all of the reform work we're doing is really focused there, and that there's a new TLG that's formed to really look at strategically aligning the support services for students and families to a new district framework that'll be under the leadership of Tony Majors, Assistant Superintendent for Student Services, so that there's really strong district-community collaboration that's very well coordinated. Additionally, we have a TLG, as you know, focused on middle school reform and another one focused on high school reform. So another transition in process is the creation of a TLG to really look at the performance of elementary schools and elementary school students. Now, again, you'll be hearing a lot more about this work as it comes into clarity and focus, and you'll be hearing from the TLG leaders themselves. But we just wanted to present this to illustrate the flexibility that's inherent in the MNPS achieve structure so that the TLGs are being continuously approved, the structures are being approved, the group formations are constantly being improved to change adult and student performance, to offer more opportunities for our students. Another focus area of the oversight team specifically has been the oversight teams monitoring the allocation of Race to the Top funds for TLG efforts. So out of the $30 million that we have, new slide, that we have, that we received from the U.S. Department of Education, from Race to the Top funds, we have set aside about $1 million and a half dollars for a kind of venture capital fund, to borrow business language, to fund innovative efforts that are coming out of the TLGs to keep the work moving forward. To date, the oversight team has approved approximately $450,000 in efforts that are really focused on some kind of pilot initiatives. This isn't money for big, large initiatives, but more for research and development, increasing outreach to stakeholders, piloting some changes in practice to see what happens, see if it's something that we want, that we evaluate, and then decide if we want to scale, evaluating efforts that are already in place. So some very specific kind of criteria that TLGs can apply for funds. The oversight team's role is to individually and collectively review these applications for approval and really address some questions around four key areas. One being, why are we doing this? So the purpose, is it really transformational? Another being coherence, you know, what strategic goal of the district is this reform, proposed reform aligned to? How does it fit with what we're already doing? And if it doesn't, it may be something that we don't want to fund at this time because we're really trying to focus on coherence. And then managing for results, you know, how are we going to know that this reform is having an impact? What are the specific measures? What's the evidence that will be collected so that we know that this is really changing practice? And then sustainability, you know, how is the reform sustainable beyond the Race to the Top grant so that we're not approving reforms that will kind of fall off a cliff when we lose our Race to the Top grant money in 2014? So those are the kinds of questions that the oversight team asks, and there's a very rigorous process that's intended to keep this collaborative work really strategic and aligned to the district's core vision.
Okay, thanks, Lisa. The next slide really talks about, a little bit about our focus for 2012, and I think there are three key words here. Abandonment is the first. We need to look very critically at what's not working and to eliminate those strategies that are not high-yield strategies that we don't feel good about. Coherence is the second word that I think's very important. Are those remaining initiatives, and I think I've given all of the board members a map of the strategic initiatives, are all of those coherent? Are they pointing in the same direction? Are our efforts all working in a coordinated fashion? And then the third one is scale. Are these transformational reform initiatives, strategies that we can take to scale or that we can institutionalize in the district as we go forward? So we're paying a great deal of attention now that we're well into Race to the Top and well into the reform initiative, that we make good, critical decisions about what we need to carry forward, what will have an end date in terms of funding and a demand for resources and what... for resources and what will be sustained beyond the life of Race to the Top. I feel really good about where we are with looking at those issues in the district in a very complex transformational strategy. And finally, I don't think we could leave this without saying about what's important. What are we really after in this initiative? And two bullets here, increased performance of all students. And that means, when we talk about increasing performance of all students, we're talking about academic, but we're also talking about the social-emotional learning of students, the education of the whole child. And we need to pay attention to both of those factors. And cross-cutting, huge initiative for us is closing achievement gaps, closing achievement gaps in the school district. We don't think we can close achievement gaps without attending to academic, but also social-emotional needs of our students as we go forward. That concludes our report. We'll be glad to answer any questions you might have about the Oversight Team, but we feel like the Oversight Team's doing very well now, doing a good job of supervising this process. And Ms. Porter may want to speak to her work on the Oversight Team.
Well, it's very intense, I can tell you that, and it's a lot going on, and what you saw here in this report is just the tip of the iceberg. Lots of information is gathered, and it's not just information just to be brought to the table, but it's meaningful information that digs really deep into what's going on in the district. So, I really feel good about being a part of this group because it gives me a broader spectrum as to what's going on away from the table. And I want to commend my colleagues on that committee because a lot of discussion goes into all of this before it gets to the board, a lot of discussion. So, if there's something that you see that we need to entertain this committee, please let us know, and I think you will be receptive, Dr. Register and Ms. Willshire, to whatever questions you might have. Mr. Kendall?
I was interested in the 1.5 million that you mentioned for the pilot-type programs, for lack of another term. How do you receive applications? What's the process for people who may have, think they have, an innovative kind of idea? For example, dealing with discipline, that kind of thing, classroom management, or whatever, you know, I'll just mention those two. What is the process of selection, are people applying for that? Is that a formal process?
There is a formal process in place where the TLGs actually do the hard work of kind of coming up with their strategies and ideas, and if they come up with something that they think they might need funding for, like for instance, the examples you gave, the Transformational Leadership Group will work together with their leaders, the two co-chairs, the district and community co-chair, and there is a formal application. It's a two-page application to be filled out that asks questions about, you know, in addition to explaining the proposed activity, they're required to submit a budget, a detailed line-item budget, as well as tie it to the strategic goals, tie it to Race to the Top pillars, address sustainability, and address results and measures. And so, that application and the budget is submitted and then sent to every Oversight Team member, and the Oversight Team members all draft a written review, looking at the proposal in detail, in addition to drafting some specific questions or concerns they may have. They send that information back in to me as the grant manager on the Oversight Team, and then we look at, do we have consensus? Does everybody say, yes, we agree that this is ready to be approved? Or, no, we have concerns? Or, what's typically more common is, maybe, but there still needs to be some work done here, and here are our questions. So, all of that information is synthesized, and then usually, we'll have either a conference call or an actual face-to-face meeting where we convene the Oversight Team members. We have convened meetings where we have the TLG leadership come in, and we just talk about the questions, and the TLG will revise their proposal according to the guidance of the Oversight Team until the Oversight Team really feels like, okay, this proposal's ready to be funded and we're ready to support it, and then it moves into the district through the normal channels and processes.
You answered my question, but I guess what I'm asking too is, if the TLG membership or whatever determined that there's a need, for example, to address specifically the problem of closing the gap, and I don't mean, when I say closed gap, I don't mean increase here to close the gap, but in terms of discipline, we have a pretty large gap in the system with disadvantaged and minority students on expulsions and suspensions, et cetera. A lot of that has to do, I'm sure, with a lot of reasons, but classroom management might be one of them. And somebody has a concept, a university, for example, says, okay, we have something we believe might work. How do they get that to you? Is that the way it works?
Yeah, let me speak to this in a little different way. The 1.5 million was written into the Race to the Top grant as resources for the TLGs. The process, so the TLGs, we have 10 now, those 10 TLGs over the years that we're doing this program have some resource to use. It's not all planning, but primarily, it's their planning grants or grants for innovation for use by those TLGs.
Okay, not for?
No.
That's why I was confused.
And I might add, Mr. Kendall, is that we get reports each time a group requesting funds from the TLG, and they're extensive reports that we read or requests for funds. We read them, we, you know, really dissect them very carefully, and then the results are sent back and compiled, and that's how the determination is made as to whether that group will be approved or not approved. And sometimes, there are lots of questions. I know myself might have, you know, several, but that's how the committee works. Sometimes, I'm a little bit late getting mine back in.
Well, obviously, this is not necessarily avenue that I was suggesting, but, you know, I've had a concern, Dr. Register and I've talked about this, but of the possibility of doing some pilot projects where we know things that might have worked in one place and pilot them to see how effective they are, and these may not be the appropriate funds for it, but that's what I thought I had found the funds, but apparently, they're not there.
I knew what you were thinking. Thank you, Lisa. The second report is one, I'll ask Jay Steele to come up, and I'll introduce this very briefly. If you'll recall, back last summer, Ms. Simmons proposed to the board that we do a review on advanced academics, and so, we've planned that to be a presentation for tonight, and I have Mr. Steele's folders here that I'll hand out and turn it over to Jay, and you have other people that I'll let you introduce as a program.
All right, thank you, Dr. Register. Good evening, Chairwoman Porter and board members. Tonight, we're going to walk you through a presentation on advanced academics that include dual enrollment, advanced placement, and international baccalaureate. Before we start, the folder that you're getting and also the executive staff have a copy of this folder also. I'll walk you through the content, and we know that tonight, you're not going to be able to take everything in, so as you look through the folder the next few days, you're welcome to email any of us or contact us for any questions that you have that we can find answers for you. In your folder, the first one is the advanced placement courses that are offered at each school in the district. The second sheet is the professional development that has been delivered for all advanced placement teachers throughout the district and continuing, it's only halfway through the year. Then you see an AP contract, an advanced placement contract that has been developed and implemented this year with all advanced placement students. You'll see several reports that are paperclipped together in color for you from College Board that shows you the number of AP exams and the number of examinations with grade three, four, or five by school, by high school. The next document is the breakdown of what the distinctions are from College Board, an AP Scholar, an AP Scholar with Honor, an AP Scholar with Distinction, and National AP Scholar, and we'll show you those numbers in our district throughout our presentation. And the last document is the professional development for IB teachers and the schools within the district. So, that's the packet that you can refer to if you have any questions for us over this presentation or the next few days. With me tonight, I have Dr. Michelle Wilcox. Dr. Michelle Wilcox is a lead principal for high schools, and she is the person that is overseeing the implementation of dual enrollment and working with our local community colleges and our local universities, both private and public. Also, Dr. Sharon Chaney, who will be addressing advanced placement tonight. She is the coordinator for advanced academics in the district. She will be addressing the advanced placement slides. And then also, Emily Munn, a new addition this year, who is the district's IB coach, and she'll be addressing the international baccalaureate schools and programs and results that you see. We have several exciting projects going on, and as we move through, the first one, bring your attention to, is the creating a college culture. As you know from high school TLG presentation back in August, that Jeff Yarborough and I are leading the high school TLG, through creating a college culture is one of our initiatives. We are using the A6 framework, which you see on the screen, breaks it down to achievement, affordability, actualization, attainment, aspirations, and awareness. These are the six As that we're promoting with all schools in the district and for all students so they can actually see themselves in college and understanding what that means and attain that goal for themselves. So, this is the framework that we're using, and tonight is the first announcement of that. We recently received a college success grant in partnership with Oasis for Pearl Cone and Maplewood that you'll be learning more about over the next few weeks in changing and establishing the A6 college culture there, and we like it so much, we're going to take it district-wide. A challenge for Tennessee schools, on average, only 44% of students at Tennessee public universities graduate within six years. Can you imagine that graduation rate if that was applied to us? And just 12% of community college students earn a degree within three years. Only 19 out of every 100 high school freshmen in Tennessee have a college degree in their hands by the time they turn 26. So, this is a challenge for us, and recently, the mayor has announced an initiative to increase the college-going rate and the college-graduation rate in Nashville, and he has elicited the help of all of the presidents of the community college, private universities, and technical schools within Nashville in the Middle Tennessee region. So, the challenge for Tennessee is clear, only 19% of 2010 high school freshmen will have a college degree by the age of 26. So, that is a major challenge for us. We feel that rigorous curriculum is the key. The rigor of the curriculum is the most significant predictor of academic success and post-secondary education completion. So, raising the bar, increasing awareness and offerings is one of the things that, or two of the things that we're working on. Hallmarks of a rigorous curriculum, standards and expectations are high and known to all students, and they have access to them no matter where they are. Student work is assessed by both the classroom teacher and outside experts. We're working very closely with College Board in many different aspects in creating this college culture. Assessments are comprehensive and well-aligned to the standards, and we are just beginning the work on aligning the assessments to the standards, and that's going to be a multi-year process in getting that done in all subjects. And focuses on both content and critical thinking. Some of the areas that we're focusing on here are blended classrooms, and many of you, I know that Gracie Porter teaches at the university level, and I'm taking my first blended classroom environment this summer, this year at Lipscomb, and what we mean by that is an online blended learning with direct instruction. One of the things, now that we have implemented Blackboard across the district, which is the standard for online learning, we are going to be working with all advanced placement and international baccalaureate teachers to develop blended learning by the fall of 2012 in all advanced placement and international baccalaureate courses. It gives our students 24/7 access to the curriculum and instruction and extends the classroom into the homes of students, so it's a 24/7 access. So, we're working now, and Dr. Chaney and Ms. Munn will be working with our AP and IB teachers, along with Dr. Keisha Ray's department, to educate our AP and IB teachers on what a blended classroom is and how that will function. College readiness, this is a way to look at it, which is all included in the A6 initiatives. Cognitive, which is the ways of thinking and reasoning, the key content, which is writing, math, and big ideas. Academic behaviors are study skills and self-monitoring, and then a contextual skills of college knowledge, tuition, admission process. So, we feel that the A6 framework addresses those areas that we need to strengthen within the district. This is just for context, tonight, in AP grades, there's one test at the end of an AP course, and students may score on a scale from 1 to 5, and you see that the 1 is the lowest of no recommendation and 5 is extremely well-qualified. In the middle, you'll see dual enrollment. Dual enrollment is just now catching on in the district, and we think you're going to see an explosion of dual enrollment over the next three to four years because most of our students, this is where they'll be most successful, in working with actual college professors or teachers with master's degrees sanctioned by the colleges during the school day, online, or in the evening, or weekends, or summers. Students must be in grades 11 and 12 to qualify for dual enrollment. We're working on some exceptions there for some 10th graders, but that's a work in progress. They must maintain a 3.0, they must maintain a C or better to continue participation in dual enrollment courses, and there's also an ACT requirement. The IB marks all requirements on a 1 to 7 scale. Again, there's an IB exam at the end of the course with 1 being the lowest score, very poor performance, and 7 being an excellent performance. So, that'll give you context as we move through the scores on how our district is performing on AP and IB. So, at this time, I'll turn it over to Dr. Michelle Wilcox to lead us through a discussion on dual enrollment.
Good evening. You can see up here on the screen some of the benefits of dual enrollment and what it is, and the best description is that students earn college credit while still in high school, which saves time, saves money. In Metro, we have determined that students who are taking a three-credit course at college will earn one full credit, which would mean a junior who takes Comp. 1 in the fall completes the requirement for English 3. Then, in junior spring term, takes Comp. 2, they would complete their English 4 requirement, leaving room in their senior year, not for an English course, but maybe a creative writing, another dual enrollment course that's getting them more prepared for college or earning them more college credits. They save money. This is supported through the Tennessee Scholarship, lottery scholarship. The courses are available on our high school campuses, they can take courses online, and of course, they can go to the college campuses. We recently completed a survey of teachers in the district at the high school level only, and we have 161 teachers with a master's degree or higher, so they meet Saks Accreditation for Teaching at the college level, interested in teaching dual enrollment courses. That even includes counselors who might want to teach a psychology course. I even had a principal interested because of his background. We have also, I mentioned Fred Carr, and I talked briefly about textbooks, and he has agreed that with our plan to get a group of textbooks for, let's say, Comp. 1 or physical science, you know, at the college level, we would rotate those books so that the school district can house a repository of textbooks that we can help issue out to schools as loaners to students. I've got a request right now for 10 Accounting I textbooks, $250 apiece, so I'm choking on that. We haven't figured out a solution just yet, but we're working. They're very expensive. We know we can't afford to buy textbooks for every student, but we're working on a plan for that. We currently have agreements with Nashville State, Volunteer State, Middle Tennessee State, and Tennessee Technical Center. We had great meetings last Friday with FISC. I can't tell you how excited FISC is in wanting to offer tuition-free, and we said, we need to, that's great, they're going to waive the tuition or waive the gap funding for students who meet the qualifications in courses. They are willing to go to- They are willing to go to Pearl Cone, for example, is very close, have our students walk or ride the activity bus, whatever we can do. That was followed by MTSU, and they, they're waiting on an email that I'm in the middle of drafting and getting Jay's approval, but they are willing to waive a $747, well, it's $447 gap between what the students can get. $300 is what they get from the Tennessee Lottery Scholarship per course. The tuition is something like $747. So they're willing to waive $447 per student who requests a scholarship.
That's great.
They're willing to provide teachers, which could free up potentially one of our teachers to go teach something else while one of their teachers is on our campus. The colleges and universities have figured out, with their new funding formula being based on not just enrollment, but progression and completion, that those students who complete dual enrollment while in high school can get to the college and meet those progression requirements, even if they don't take a full load. So they're, they're getting more and more interested. We are also going to have conversations with TSU, Vanderbilt, UT, Lipscomb, Belmont, Mahary, Tennessee Technical University, East Tennessee, and University of Memphis. And I don't think I left anybody out that was recommended, that hasn't reached out to us. Oh, Austin P., they, they want to work with our Teaching Academy initially, so we're working on that. And I'd like to give you a few numbers. We have students at middle college. Last year, 413 courses were taken, 1,036 credits, college credits were earned, two students graduated with an Associate of Arts degree. Of that, at an approximate $139 per credit hour, that saved our students $144,004. In the fall, 547 credits were earned. We have four December graduates, and they saved $76,033. We've used $20,359.50 in gap funding, which helps cover that gap cost for students who need it. And the greatest thing of all is that George Van Allen, President of Nashville State Community College, has agreed to waive the gap funding, and Mary Johnston has the MOU, I believe. We're trying, we were hoping an MOU didn't require her input. But it does. So we're trying to get that through very quickly. He has agreed to waive the gap funding, either if we have a district average of 20 students in all dual enrollment classes that are through NSCC, or on a class-by-class basis. So if we have 20 students, he will waive the gap funding for all of those students. So he just says, "We want your students." So that's great. And I think that'll do, and we'll have much more for you in July.
So as you can see, dual enrollment is going to be an area that we're really going to increase here in Nashville. In other states around the country, dual enrollment is free for all high school students, allowing them to gain as, all the way up to a full AA or AS by the, by the time they graduate, and all textbooks would be free. Tennessee is not one of those states, so we will be working hopefully to overturn some of those barriers to allow all students to get it for free, or at least get them the funding that they need to take as much dual enrollment as possible. And now I'm going to introduce Dr. Sharon Chaney, and she will lead us through a discussion on advanced placement.
Good evening. We are pleased to bring updates to you about the advanced placement and the international baccalaureate programs for students in our district. The, the advanced placement program is owned and operated by the College Board, which began in 19, the 1950s, and was known then as the College Entrance Examination Board. And a few years later, in 1968, the International Baccalaureate Organization rolled out its IB diploma for juniors and seniors in high school. And since then, in the 90s, they have developed and introduced two new programs for younger students, the middle years and the primary years programs. And both these organizations insist on open enrollment policies, which allow any student who is motivated to take part and participate in these programs. But they hasten to say that the students should be well-prepared through pre-IB and pre-AP work, and that they should be carefully counseled about the proper choices for their schooling. To get our perspective on advanced placement in our state, here's a very colorful chart that shows the districts in different colors according to the number of students participating in 2010 graduating class. And you will see that Metro Nashville and Shelby County and Clarksville, Montgomery County, and Knox County, and a few others are light green. So that means that 20 to 29% of our graduates that year had taken at least one AP exam during their high school years. And we're working to increase that through marketing procedures, through parent information sessions, through counseling, proper counseling, and through the teacher support. And the PD page that you have in your packet for AP teachers shows two very enticing items coming up in January and February for our teachers: Multiple-choice training and also mock essay scoring sessions in 18 different subject areas. Two main measures of success for the advanced placement program are the number of students enrolled in the courses and the number of exams that they write. The blue bars on this chart show a gradual and consistent increase in the number of occupied seats in AP classes, and with the largest leap in 2011. We're working to increase the number of students who write those exams through the AP student contract that you see in your packet. And when the student and the parent sign that contract, they are saying, "We understand that it is an expectation to take the AP exam in May for every AP course that the student takes." One AP exam, one grade, no pressure. Of course, a major measure of success is the number of threes, fours, and fives that students earn on those tests. So if we look on this five-year trend chart and compare the past two years, we see that a slightly higher number of exams was written in 2010, but a significantly higher number of threes, fours, and fives was earned in 2011. Of, in fact, 40.7% threes, fours, and fives in 2010, and 48.1% in 2011. And your packet of 16 pages will show the five-year trends for each of the high schools in our district. We want to serve all our students. This shows the ethnicity of AP test takers statewide in 2011. There were about 18,000 students, 17,907 to be more accurate, that wrote the test, AP test, in 2011. 69% were Caucasian and 17% African-American in our state. In our district, for the same year, 2011, we had 45% Caucasian and 31% African-American, with Asian and Hispanic students writing comparable number, comparable number of Asian and Hispanic students. Another good news slide: Students may distinguish themselves through their AP test scores. The College Board does not offer a diploma, as does the International Baccalaureate, but, but they do offer these awards to students. So if a student scores three or more on three or more exams, he is an AP Scholar; on four or more exams, an AP Scholar with Honor; on five or more exams, with distinction. So we see that 354 different students in, in the 2011 graduating class distinguished themselves in this way across their high school careers. Now, 23 of those AP Scholars with distinction were also National AP Scholars because they scored four or more on eight or more exams. And that is quite an accomplishment for our students, and they, and their schools, and their teachers, and parents are to be commended and applauded for their work. And so to update us with the International Baccalaureate information is Emily Munn, our IB district coach.
Hello. Good evening. The first slide shows the IB programs in Tennessee, and there's a total of 22 programs: 12 diploma programs, which are for 11th and 12th graders; the NYPD is from middle school to 10th grade, and PYP are the elementary schools. In metro public schools, we have 10 of the 22 schools. We have two high schools, Hunter's Lane and Hillsborough, that have DP programs. We have seven NYPD schools, and we have one PYP school and one PYP candidate school who have their authorization visit at the end of January, and we're hoping that they will become authorized as well. And that will help strengthen our K-12 continuum in the Hillsborough cluster. This chart shows the growth of the IB diplomas earned, and we have seen huge numbers of students becoming successful and earning their diploma. The, this chart represents IB candidates, and an IB candidate is a student who wants to earn the diploma and who takes the coursework in all of the tests. And we have a huge growth at Hillsborough, and I attribute that to the academy model, where students are really becoming informed about decisions about the IBDP academy. And at Hunter's Lane, we have significant growth every year consistently. The final slide is the NYPD enrollment, and this represents all of the NYPD schools in Nashville. And the growth happens when schools are authorized, as well as when the schools move from partial school and school model to full school model.
Thank you, Emily. One of the things that we wanted to announce, if, in order for an advanced placement course to run, and an IB course, we have to have numbers of students in the classroom to make it cost-effective. If, if a group of students would like an AP course at Maplewood, and there aren't enough students to, to run the class, we have been able to offer some courses virtually this year. Our first AP computer science course ran virtually this year with students from all over the district, and it was a great success. It's still continuing on. So far, it's been a success, and we hope to continue that and add to that catalog of advanced placement courses. And we're also running our first IB courses virtually with the International Baccalaureate Organization and having success in there. And those are difficult. They're not easy. So our last slide in creating the college culture is our action steps. Number one is an increased awareness of all accelerated options and benefits of each, so parents and students can make informed choices. Most people don't know what dual enrollment means, so we want to really focus in on educating people what that means, as well as advanced placement and international baccalaureate. Early identification and preparation of prospective students through the PSAT, the NYPD participation, compass testing, and GPA reviews, working with our counselors, to go through the cumulative records and find those students who, who will be successful, who have the potential, and then encourage them to enter those courses and have conversations with them. Continue to increase the rigor of aligned curricula to foster college readiness for all students. Provide professional development for our teachers, counselors, and administration specific to setting clear expectations with a focus on academic rigor and support for all students in the school. Using data to develop systems and structures to support, to support our students and teachers, and conduct an ongoing accelerated options campaign using the A6. Probably in February or early at the board meeting in March, you will see a campaign that's been created by the students at Hunter's Lane High School that will market the accelerated options from kids to kids across the district through commercials, printed material, and different mechanisms for marketing. And then final one is work with area post-secondary institutions to strengthen the partnerships. And they're starting to come to us now and want access to the students in each of the schools. So it's a common goal for all of us, and we'll let it, that is our mission, and the, we're working with the administration to tackle curriculum, instruction, and behavioral changes to create a college, a college success, a college culture. So at this time, we'll take any questions you have.
Ms. Hayes?
Sure. I'm not sure exactly where to direct this question. I took the, the, the package and looked at the AP classes offered, and I also added the numbers in each school. I think Ms. Chaney reported 3960 tests taken in 1904, had a 3, 4, or 5 when you, when you take each individual school. And adding each individual school, there's, I added 3946 taken in 1901 passed. So I saw a little bit of a discrepancy between the individual school that'll break out and just the gross number reported, and wondering what's right or wrong. Not a huge issue, just, just from a reporting standpoint, wondering. Something that caused me concern, and I, and I guess this could be directed to both of you, to my fellow board members or Dr. Register, when you look at the aggregate data at the school level, six of the 16 schools showed fewer than 15% of the students receiving a 3, 4, or 5. Five of the 16 schools, less than 10%. 13 of the 16 high schools, fewer than 50% had a 3, 4, or 5. And so I'm wondering what the goal is. Would it be that everybody gets a 3, 4, or 5?
Absolutely.
Or, you know, as we look at the next three or four years, where would you guys, where, what targets have been set up to try to, to move that forward? Can you tell me where you, where you see this, where you hope this is going?
Well, of course, our goal is for every student, when they enter an AP course, that they take the exam. That's number one. And we're working toward that. That's why the contract was established, because so many of our kids are not taking the exams when they enter the class, which, in the state of Tennessee, kids have to pay for those exams. And as a district, we are receiving funds that reimburse us when those kids pay for the, pay for those exams, but not, that is not for everyone at this point. The second piece, and of course, we've got to raise those scores. One of the things that you'll see in other states is AP is not for everyone. There are students that will do better in dual enrollment and obtain that college credit with a C or better. I'm, I'm hoping that we will see, well, I'm not hoping, I'll restate that. I think you're going to see in the next two to three years, a decrease in some of the, the number of kids taking AP courses, and an increase in the number of kids taking dual enrollment courses. Our goal is for both to increase, but I think you might see a dip in that while dual enrollment is starting to catch on to be more popular with a lot of the students, because it is direct college instruction from the college professor. Our goal is for every kid to take the exam and to receive the highest score possible. Sharon has done a lot of extensive training with the AP and College Board, with the AP teachers, and you can talk a little bit about that.
One of the things we know is that it is very important for students to be prepared for the AP classes when they register for them. So, so a large, critical component of, of this movement is to counsel students before they register for the classes. Sometimes it is because my friends are in the class that I would like to be in there also, rather than thinking about the learning and my, my goals for my future. And so we're, we're sure that the AP district contract will, will help students think toward that. They have to sign this contract before they register for the course, they and their parents. Then they will think about, well, is this really what I need to do? Then, before that, prior to that, we are wanting to strengthen the preparation that the students gain in their earlier classes, in their honors classes, in their middle school classes. And one, one plan in the pipeline for the summer is AP biology training for biology teachers, not just the biology teacher at the school, usually there's only one, but a second biology teacher that might be in the pipeline, in, in an earlier grade at that same school, so that each school would have two trained biology teachers, so we can try to strengthen our, our science and math scores in that way.
Do we, do we have, I take it that we have not, we have not as a board dictated a goal to say, "We'd like to see 65%, you know, 65% of kids that take the exams pass." That, you don't have that edict from us or, or the administration. From a, from an evaluation standpoint, is any of the AP test data and scores used at all in teacher evaluation? And I, I don't doubt that we have significantly, fantastic teachers that teach our AP classes, and that we're doing a lot to, to help them with training. I'm just wondering, do we use any of this data in their evaluations?
For their evaluation, for the Tennessee? One difficulty with that, and though some teachers would like to do it, is that the scores- scores aren't available until July. The, the scoring of the test takes place in June, and so the scores come the, the week of the 4th, literally. And they are too late. I think the state is considering that, about how they might adjust that to make that possible.
But we could certainly look at, now that we're evaluating on an annual basis.
Yes.
We could look at a prior four-year, five-year track record.
Yes.
Yes, we could. And that, that was one of the options when the lead principals look at the data that's going to be used for the final community evaluation of teachers. The AP scores were there as, and IB scores were there as a choice. But as, as Dr. Chaney said, the evaluation is done before the scores come in. So you would be using the scores for one year before that evaluation.
Right. Thank you.
Yes, Ms. Simmons?
Well, I commend a lot of the things that, that you're doing and, and are trying to increase this. The, the one concern I have is, I'm, pardon me? The one concern I have is that the, the information you, you gave us in our pockets about the number of examinations and the number with grades of three, four, and five, if you just take the magnet schools, and, and even if, if you add in, say, the Nashville School of the Arts, you've got 1,456, if my math is correct, that are in the magnet schools that are, are, are grades with four, five, and six. And if you take all the other schools, you have only 445. You know, that number really is concerned, concerns me. And I assume it concerns you all, too. Basically, if you're not in a magnet school, you have very little encouragement, peer pressure, whatever it may be, to take and to exceed in the examination, the AP courses. And that, you know, you had a slide or, on, you want every, you want to serve our students, all students. You know, you know, this is just serving, as I can see, the students in the magnet schools, and very little service is given to the students in our zone schools. Can you speak to that?
Well, I know that the schools have surveys. We developed a survey that they might give to students to, to gauge their interest in what, what courses they're able, they would, would have interest in offering for the future years. One of the difficulties is, and I think Jay mentioned this earlier, is that the numbers are not there quite often to justify offering a full course. I do know that last year, a young man at McGabbit went around to various of his friends and said, "I want to take world history." We don't have AP world history. Come along and let's register for world history. So Barry Cordell, who is the AP European History teacher at the school, was approached by these young people to ask whether he would teach world history if they could offer it in, at the AP level. And there were enough students to justify that course, and they wanted it, and he was able to offer it. So, so there is a, there, yes, there is, there is a sense at which the schools respond to what the students, what the students want. The most popular courses are the English ones and the US history, the ones that are offered most, at most of the schools, as you can see from the, the X chart. And, and then it's a matter of the teachers going around and selling their, their courses. I was, I happened to be at a meeting, an AP meeting at Overton recently, where the principal, the assistant principal, and all the AP teachers were there. And they were making a plan about how they were going around prior to registration to explain to the, the students what their courses were all about and to put a face to, to this. So, so there is that recruitment piece that they are, that they're trying very hard to, to interest the students in.
Well, you know, I know that the numbers have to be there to justify it. But I think it's, the onus needs to be on the schools and the school system to ensure that there's rigor, that the students strive for that, that they understand the importance of that. I don't think that we can allow students to sort of opt out of anything hard or difficult. And, and it really concerns me that our zone schools seem to be doing that.
Well, we have, we have two things, and I agree 100% with you. Unfortunately, some of the most focused, cream-of-the-crop students choose to go to the magnets, and, and we understand that. So that leaves a culture at a lot of our schools that's not a college culture. So that's why we put it as a priority this year to build that college culture and raise that aspirations and awareness of all the students in those zoned high schools. That's why we've been working with students to develop a student-led campaign that will be, that's created by the students, delivered by the students from peer to peer to encourage that growth. Because we do see it as, as, it's not fair to those students. They're not getting the same education or the opportunities. I'll say it that way. That's another reason why we implemented the virtual program this year, because if, if we can offer something at one school, it should be available to every student. We had such, we're having such great success with the AP computer science that we're purchasing additional AP courses, that we can deliver that to any kid, no matter where they are and what school they're in, for any circumstance. So you are correct, it is a, it's a cultural paradigm shift for a lot of our schools and our teachers and our students. And it's also an education of parents within those communities of the services that we can provide for them, and then for us to deliver it at the highest level. It is a concern. We're trying to address it with the, the media campaign and education and raising expectations and offerings at every school. The lead principals are, we're working on scheduling now for next year and their master schedules. The lead principals are meeting with each principal, and that isn't an expectation or requirement to raise the number of offerings in your school and to, for those counselors to find those kids and, I hate to say the word force, but almost force those kids. You have to encourage them extra than kids who aren't as motivated. You have to really push them into those courses. So that is a goal. You are correct. It is a concern.
Mr. North, and then Mr. Kendall.
According to the map you showed us, we, we compare pretty well with school districts across the state in the percentage of students who have taken and won at least one, right, AP exam. It's actually a pretty impressive map. But we have, and, and, and we are increasing dramatically the number of students that take AP courses. But we have over 3,100 students who took the course and didn't take the test. Now, have we, there seems to me a lot of possible reasons for students not to do that. One is, you have to pay to do it, that, right? And one is, we don't have the expectations that they do it, and we're addressing that with the contract. One may be that they don't expect to do well on it.
Yes.
And so they, they feel it's a waste of time. One is, it's, you know, the last week of their senior year, and they have senioritis to the nth degree, right? And all of those, some of those we can, you know, we can work to, to help. Some of them, I mean, I, you know, I don't know what the cure for senioritis is. Maybe there is one. You know, maybe, maybe graduation, right? Graduation. Yeah, then junioritis becomes a same thing. So, I mean, do we, do we, are we doing, I don't know, exit interviews or some sort of survey to know what the, the predominant reason for, for, for this gap is and, and with a strategy to, to address it?
Yes. The AP, there's an AP building coordinator at each one of the 16 high schools. And that AP building coordinator usually receives the money for the exams, orders the tests, knows by March, early spring, before the, the date that the order has to be placed, which students are going to take the test and which ones are not. And, and during that period of time, there's much conversation and push about why not. And it should be noted that, in many cases, it's the valedictorian of the class who decides not to take the test, because I've already been admitted to the colleges and universities of my choi, of my choice, and I don't really need this test. And teachers say, oh, please do it for me. But then, you know, it's that.
It's another test.
Yes, it's just another test, and that, I've really had all the tests I want to take. So it is an upfront expectation that we're trying to push at the moment, to get the students to think about that. And, and it does work in many cases. It had, it worked for me as an AP teacher, to say upfront, that when you take the test, this is what you do. And in fact, I tried to implement such a contract in my class, but, but it was suggested that I couldn't do that in free public education. But I had everything on file, all the signatures, and at the end of the year, all the students took the test, even though I told them they didn't have to. They were thinking about it. So there was less waffling during the, you know, today I didn't do well, so I won't take the test.
Let me also state with advanced placement that more and more universities are not accepting their credit. It is up to the, the receiving university, and they, they're placing more and more barriers in place for students that are coming in with a score of three or four.
Right.
That they're not offering their credit, or they're making it take exams to, to prove and validate those scores, even with some of the upper scores, that a lot of the universities are not accepting it anymore. So you, that is spreading with the kids.
And that gets to, after a student is accepted, that they know which courses and what test grades they have to get and know whether it's going to be.
Exactly. They're very savvy. There was a great human cry at McGabbit last year among English Lit students who had taken the English Lang course and test as 11th graders, and suddenly they realized that they would not get credit for both courses at their university, so why am I taking this course? And no one had ever told them that they would get that credit, but suddenly they had realized that.
Right.
So there are all those things in the mix.
Thank you.
Mr. Kendall, and then Ms. Shepherd.
Yep. This is kind of a follow-up related to what Kay was, as Ms. Simmons was asking a few moments ago. But it seemed like we have kind of a catch-22 when it comes to, you know, identifying schools that have large population of kids who take an AP. For example, in my district, one high school, they only have five AP courses, whereas we have some schools that have as many as 18. I don't, I know we don't have sister schools, but I like to think of Pearl Collin and Hillwood as sister high schools, sister, brother high schools, because they interchange students, you know, according to zoning. But, you know, if you don't have the course, and a, and a parent, a child is looking at a school, obviously, if they want the child to take AP calculus or whatever, they're going to select a school that has the AP calculus. Now, we can argue, of course, that, well, you gotta have enough kids, and I know we've argued that for a long time, and that's, that's a reality, to take it for it to be justified. But if it's not there, then even the selection of the school, you know, I mean, if I got a child who's advanced or achiever, high achiever, and wants to take AP calculus, AP physics, et cetera, certainly, I'm not going to send him to a school that doesn't even offer. So that's kind of a situation that we've tried to address, I know, over the years, because at one time, Pearl Collin only had one AP class. And just in recent years, we've, we've gotten to five. But, and Ms. Simmons was asking about, that some would argue that if you dispersed all of the kids in MLK, Hume-Fogg, MEGS, et cetera, back into the regular system, you would still have the same number of kids passing and, and, and doing very well in, in these courses. And, you know, it's arguable. And so it may not be just the culture of the school, it's, it's the students that go there and what they choose, choose to take are the, with the encouragement, obviously, of prior teachers and parents. So I don't know how we address that. That's, that's a very complicated issue. I know it's, like I said, it's a catch-22. The course is not there, you don't go there, but you gotta get enough students to take it. So I, I don't know how we, how we resolve that.
It's an expectation. It's a one-on-one meeting with the principals and counselors. It is an expectation that you will offer these courses and you will recruit. If the course doesn't run, then we, we have a backup plan of virtual covering those courses that, as much as we possibly can, that's available virtually. And virtual's not for every student. In some of the schools, we have made some administrative changes, and those administrative changes have been as, partially as a result of not moving it forward. So that, that is an expectation, and that is a conversation that's being had with each principal by their lead principals or by me individually. The expectation is there, you will offer more, you will find these students and, and get them the support and in the classes they need.
Well, I like the concept of the virtual, because I can see where if you had, say, three students at, at Pearl Collin who were interested in one of these courses, then they could tie into what's going on at Hillwood or whatever.
Absolutely. And that did happen with the AP computer science. There were some Pearl Collin students who did take the course.
Okay. All right.
Ms. Shepherd?
Kudos on a great report, and your efforts are outstanding, and I'm real excited about, you know, all the different areas that you presented tonight. My question, you may have covered this, I think, actually, Ms. Wilcox talked about the dual enrollment. Are there any requirements for a student to have, to be able to, you know, participate in dual enrollment?
Yes, they must have a 3.0, be in the 11th grade or 12th grade. Some courses, we're trying to get 10th grade, but right now, it's 11th and 12th, 3.0, and they must maintain a C average to continue in participation.
A C average in both?
Yeah, in the.
C average in their college.
In their college courses.
Okay.
They get below a C in the college course, then they're not allowed to continue on. That stays on the transcript, they cannot take anymore.
Is there a requirement for GPA in their high school classes?
3.0.
Oh, okay, so it's for both?
Yeah.
Okay, all right. And I think y'all also spoke to some gap funding?
Yes.
So if I understood correctly, then some of the students might be required to have, to pay for a college course?
Yes, every student taking dual enrollment must pay the tuition from that state entity. That is covered in a lottery scholarship for students here in Nashville. It's limited. They get, I think, $300 a semester. So that's $600 for a year, for two classes. Then that does not cover the full tuition. So that's what we're referring to as the gap. That is what some of the universities and colleges are starting to waive at this point for us, because our students cannot afford that with 70% economically disadvantaged and free reduced lunch, they cannot pay for that. In other states, this is where we could really have help of legislators and anybody that's community advocates or, it is free in other states. If Tennessee would move in that direction, you would see, I think, an explosion of kids wanting and taking those courses. A lot of the courses in high school that are for high school credit could be supplemented with a college class where they get, for example, Ms. Wilcox talked about, if they take Comp 1, that's English 3. That's three college credits and one high school credit at the same time in a semester. Then the second semester, they take Comp 4, uh, Comp 2, which is their English 4, that's one English credit for English 4, and three college credits at the same time. We can do more and more of that. That will give more of these kids an opportunity to be successful in high school, graduating with full AA degrees two weeks before they graduate with their high school diploma. That's the norm in other states. We need to get there here.
I would agree. Thank you.
Any other questions?
I have a question.
Yes.
I'm just curious, is there any additional, I'm thinking there is, additional costs to the district to offer an AP course?
The teacher must be trained, and that training is offered by the college board only in the summer, the full week-long training that is the richest and that is, that is the most effective for the teachers. There is a one-day training that is kind of an introductory refresher course that is much less expensive, but the training is about $1,200 to $1,500 per teacher for the summer, five days. But then, then the other cost is for the exam, $87 currently.
And that's borne by the student, though?
For, yes, for the students, for each exam that, that.
That they take. Okay, and so the five day is a one-time? And am I required to go back? Am I required to do refresher every?
Well, the truth is that the college board does not actually require, they heavily recommend, there's no, there's no licensure for AP teaching, but there is an AP audit to which teachers, each classroom teacher must submit a syllabus, and it is read by a college reader and authorized, or sent back to the teacher for revision. So that there's paper documentation about what is planned to go on in that class that must match the course description that is officially the college board one. But in terms of going back for training. But in terms of going back for training, sometimes teachers begin to feel the need to do that, and sometimes they pay their own way if the schools and the district cannot afford to do that. Teachers do that on their own sometimes.
So I guess it's fair to say, just hearing your comment about the curriculum, all AP's courses are not created equal either. So the AP course that's offered, because I, as an AP instructor, I'm creating my own course curriculum that at a minimum must match what the states outline for that course is. But I can supplement and enhance that in any way that I choose.
Yes, there is flexibility, but that basic syllabus must, must have the, the major components and topics required.
Okay. And, and I guess I'm, I went through the same, and this might freak you out a little bit, Mr. Hayes, the same, looking at the numbers of the percentages of students at some of the high schools and versus the magnet schools, and not really the number that are offered. I'm, I'm really not so caught up in the courses that are offered. I understand the concept of supply and demand, and, you know, given where we are, I think we need to be very conscientious about where we put our investment and making sure, ensuring that we're, we're getting, you know, out of it what we're putting into it. My concern is really about the passing percentage. I don't care if it's five students taking it, or 20 students taking it, or 364 students that are sitting for the exams. It's the number of students and how this, the disparity across the different types of schools, be it magnet or zone schools, that are actually passing the exam. And so that's really where, and you've spoken on it, I just wanted to just echo the concern that where I would be looking to see where efforts are, and I know we have Closing the Gap under the other report, I think we have a Closing the Gap concern in the AP space. And again, not just in offering more courses, because I don't think that solves the problem. It's how is it that students at one particular school seem, by the numbers, less prepared to sit and successfully pass the exam? Not caught up by the number who choose. If only one chooses, and that one doesn't pass, and it's a court, an AP course of a type that's offered at every school, why is it that the numbers are so, you know, so low at a certain schools versus the others? And so I guess that's what I would like for you to, even if you've already said it, I apologize, just reiterate what efforts are going on to really, is it in the professional development space? Are we looking to do more standardization of the curricula that's offered? So, you know, we take what the state says is required. Are we looking as a district, from a closing the gap perspective, what are some of the additional things we need to do for certain of our students to help better prepare them to be successful in sitting for the exam?
One of the things that we're hoping that will have an impact is moving with the blended classroom, the blended learning environment with our AP, starting with our college-going students first. Those, those AP and IB teachers, we want every student to go to college, but I'll, I'll give you a personal story, and I know this is on TV, but I have a fam, my niece is in college right now and in her sophomore year, and took her first course that was a blended course, and the teacher kept referring to her, "Go to Blackboard, go to Blackboard, there's assignments there." She didn't know what that was. She went to the board in the classroom and was looking for the assignments, and ended up failing the class because she got an A with the, the classroom instruction, but never did any of the online blended learning, and was removed from the program because of that. So that just happened in, in the fall. So that taught me a valuable lesson, that we're not preparing these kids for college preparation if we're not giving them a blended online learning environment with Blackboard or whatever the, the system is. So the, one of the first things that we're starting that I've challenged Sharon and Emily and Dr. Ray is to train those teachers on the blend, the AP and the IB teachers on the blended learning environment, getting their curriculum online, getting a lot of that 24/7 access with kids online, and, and get that up and running in the fall. I think that will have an impact. The other thing that Dr. Chaney can address, it's continued professional development. We've got to strengthen the, the teacher skills in those classrooms, the expectations, and Dr. Chaney addresses that consistently, and also Emily, with the addition of the IB coach position this year, to offer that training in-house embedded in our schools, not just coming from College Board or the IB organization, but in-house with some of our best teachers who are having success.
So in your example, I, actually what I would have thought you were going to go to is how are we orienting our students to be prepared for virtual classroom? I mean, online learning is totally different in...
Yes.
I'm sure we know this, totally different than sitting in a classroom.
Yes.
So what is the, how do we, how are we preparing our students for that virtual, no one in your face, ensuring that you're paying attention?
Right, that's, that's the, that's the beauty of a blended classroom.
Okay.
So, because the teachers will have access to them on a daily basis. We also have some tutorials built into Blackboard that takes the students through what online, online learning environment is and the expectations, and some tutorials that they work through before they're allowed into the environment.
Okay.
I just have one other question. Are farm students eligible for assistance in the cost of the test?
Yes. Yes. Right now, it, it is, the state does, through some grants, reimburse us for those students several months after. I mean, it takes a while to come in, but the, the fees are paid upfront, and then the state can reimburse us. But that's a grant that won't last forever.
Okay.
Ms. Simmons?
I would just like to say that you can see there's great interest in, in this topic, and, and I would just encourage you to, to keep it on the forefront of your planning and, and hopefully that it too will close the gap.
Yes.
Your efforts. Thanks.
Thank you.
I would like, if, if at all possible, at one of our work sessions, to continue this discussion and update, not in the near future, but sometime, maybe a couple of months.
Sure, our second update is in June, but we'll be happy, and that might not be the best time. It might need to be July, because that's when the results would come back. But we are scheduled for June, but we would ask for that to be July.
Well, we can always change you.
Sure.
You know, your time with someone else, so if you need us to do that. Dr. Redster, would that be a problem?
No.
Okay.
I do have one more question.
Yes.
She's making me ask. And I wrote it down. At one point in time, I think there was an earlier, an earlier report where we were looking to find funds to actually pay the money for the test for students.
Well, we don't have a plan to do that. We're, that's part of the grant, that's part of the grant that the state gets to reimburse us for that. But it is up to a, a school, an individual school at this point, if there are free and reduced lunch students that can't afford it, to solicit funds wherever they can to pay for that upfront.
I think it was a part of our discussion early on in, when Ms. Simmons asked about it coming back to us as a report, there was some brief discussion as to how could we...
We helped us something.
Yeah.
Because I, I'll tell you, for a farm student, you know, reimbursement is nice, but I got to find $87 first.
You got to find it upfront.
Yeah. Thank you.
Madam Chair, that concludes my report.
Thank you, Dr. Redster. I do not have a report at this time. We'll move on into the announcements, and we'll start it with you, Ms. Simmons.
I have none.
No announcements. And Mr. North?
I, I have, I have sad announcement. We lost three members of our school family over the past few weeks. Clay Myers, administrator, principal at Hunter's Lane, Hillwood, and other places, passed away, and we, we send our condolences to his family and friends. We lost a student from Kirkpatrick, Cortavis Green, and, in, in a fire, I believe, a tragic loss, and we send our condolences and our thoughts and wishes to that family and friends and all the Kirkpatrick Elementary School family. We also lost Jason Covington, a student at Pearl Cone, and we are saddened by that loss, and we send our condolences to his family and friends and the entire Pearl Cone family.
And we have one other name to add to that. Some of us remember Patricia Kirchner, that was also eulogized this week as one of our former principals. So it, it seems as we get older, we notice these things more, but our hearts goes out to the, the families of all of these individuals.
Ms. Shepherd?
I have a couple of announcements from my colleague, Ms. Hay, who had to leave. This coming Friday morning at 7:00 AM, we're having our monthly youth safety summit meeting at the Martin Professional Development Center. And then also on the Tuesday, January 24th, the Governance Committee will meet at 6:30. And then I have an announcement of my own to piggyback on the report we just heard on college readiness. Doye is sponsoring a FAFSA night at McGabbic High School this coming Thursday at 5:00. So if you'd like to help any of our young students take this important step towards furthering his or her education, we would love to have you come help us. It's always, it's, we always get a good turnout, so I'm looking forward to it.
I'd just like to announce the mid-year graduation for high school students at McGabbic on Thursday, January 12th at 6:00.
Dr. Gentry?
None.
Okay. I have one or two I would like to place emphasis on. On this Thursday, Mr. North and I will travel to Murfreesboro to attend the Rutherford County Board of Education meeting and to evaluate them for an upcoming award that they're receiving. Hopefully one day we can get in the award category. On Monday, January 16th, we pause to celebrate the Martin Luther King Junior Holiday. And on Tuesday, January 24th, we'll have our standing work session here in the boardroom at 5:00. It's not a regular board meeting, but it will be a work session. And I would like to remind board members to please submit your disclosure form to the Tennessee Ethics Commission by the end of January. So if you haven't seen your envelope that came in the mail, you did as I did, you opened it and put it to one side, so let's go back and pick it up. Also, Governor Haslam has declared January 28th, 22nd through the 28th, a School Board Appreciation Week in Tennessee. So happy School Board Appreciation Week to all of you.
And there be no further business. I move adjourned.
Thank you.
And favorably.
And board members, we do have any sessions. Right.